Hey Eric.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Um, we have no applications tonight. Hold on a sec.
I saw that and I figured I'd come on just to see.
Yeah, I went till Beth comes on and I didn't think about it until I saw your name and I went up.
Yeah, I kind of, I looked at the agenda.
Yeah, we're just doing one ordinance. So the reality is we probably don't even need you tonight.
Okay, I figured I saw the agenda. I said, you know, let me just log on if you don't, you don't, then it's.
I've been, so we'll just wait for Beth.
Traffic's pretty light tonight, so I shouldn't have an issue.
No issue getting from into the kitchen, right?
Oh, yeah, we'll wait for Beth and see what she says and then.
I don't think, okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
At least you didn't drive to Milburn, you know.
No, that's kind of nice.
There.
Hey Beth, um, we are in tonight. As he popped on, I remembered we don't have any applications. We just have the ordinance. Can we cut him loose for the night?
We sure can. I think it's only right.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Hey, everybody. See you next time. That's okay. No worries. We'll see you next time.
Good night. Eileen, I just sent you an email, but I realize you may not be able to check, but I just wanted to let you know the attachment you sent instead of the minutes was the agenda again, the other. Yeah, so we won't, we won't approve those tonight.
No problem.
Yep. I noticed it earlier and then I was like, maybe I just missed it and I would go back in my email and anyway.
One of those, one of those weeks. It's crazy.
All good.
So we are just doing the ordinance. We're not going to do the historic discussion or.
Correct. We'll have the memorialization and then we'll talk about the ordinance and then we'll just mention that for, for just for next time. I just, I don't think, you know, we got it yesterday. I don't, I don't really have sufficient.
I was out of the office. Well, I was.
Oh, no, it's, it's fine.
So I didn't come back into the office till yesterday and so.
Yeah, and I think we just want to make sure we have enough time to notice, you know, let everybody know. All who want to attend can, can participate or at least hear it. Okay, getting myself organized on the side. And good evening, Graham. Hi, here.
Hello. I get that. Hope you got my messages afternoon. Sorry, just kind of circling around on that. So, but yeah, I think the approach is perfect on that.
Thanks. Eileen, I did not hear from anybody if they were not able to attend tonight. I don't get it.
I only heard from Craig. He has another meeting, so he's not going to be here tonight.
Okay. Eileen, I just want to confirm before we start the meeting and have roll call. Everybody who were a new member or members position change who were sworn in at our last meeting, did you receive copies of all of the documentation as you needed just to make sure we can do roll call with them?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, I have, we're just at 7:30, so I'll read us in and we'll see this here by the end of my paragraph. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, December 7th, 2022 at 7:30 PM via the Zoom virtual platform. Due to the COVID-19 virus, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The meeting notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio and video means. This notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall bulletin board and Milburn Town Hall front door.
Deborah Nevis.
Present.
Maggie Miggins.
Here.
SuJatha Sean. She's not.
I think I see SuJatha's name, but I will need to turn her camera on and volume.
In the meantime, Sweeney Vijay.
Yes, President.
Corey Biller.
Present.
Allison Canfield. Allison.
She sees. I think she's just trying to find the mute button perhaps. Not sure. Allison, are you able to hear us? Yes, Allison. Okay, if somebody is able to possibly send Allison an email or message on the side just to see, she may need to log out and back in. We can't hear her.
We'll make a guess on here. Diane is here. SuJatha.
I, I can't seem to start my video. Can you hear me?
Yes, SuJatha, we are hearing you, but we will need to see you. Or do you want to try to log out and back in perhaps? I don't know if you're on your computer or your phone.
I'm on my computer. I can't seem to, let me log back in.
Okay.
All right, I'll continue. Daniel Bear.
Here.
Betsal.
Here.
Diane Aglow.
Here.
Gaston Halper.
Here.
So we're just waiting on SuJatha to see if she. Will be joining us.
I had seen, do you got Shreeni? I see he's here too. Yes, okay, great.
Yeah.
Thanks. A bit of a chaotic start. All right, let's give SuJatha just a moment. Hopefully she can log right back in before we jump in. I will make a note. The first item that was printed on our agenda tonight was the approval of the minutes of November 2nd, but we didn't receive those. Eileen had sent an attachment, but inadvertently it was just the agenda. So we will just go ahead and defer and review the, the minutes of November 2nd before our next meeting also in November. So we will have those for review and approval at our next meeting. Oh, it looks like SuJatha should be able to be with us again.
I just can't start the video.
Allison, can you hear us?
Maybe folks should try joining from phones in lieu of the computer since hopefully that would be a more, I don't know, reliable redundancy. I don't know.
Let me try through that. Sorry about this.
Allison is saying she still can't hear.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just pushed a button. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are you hearing us as well, Allison?
I am. Thank you.
Okay.
So just SuJatha is.
Feels like March 2020.
Madam Chair, I know for the record that SuJatha was not at the, or did not vote anyway. I don't have her down as voting at the prior meeting when we did the resolution. So if you want to move forward with that, if Eileen's records reflect the same.
Yeah, she was just unable to run the resolution. She was not at that meeting.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate that, Ed. It looks like SuJatha is with us. So if you want to just have her for roll call purposes and just confirm that both Allison and SuJatha are in our meeting.
Yes, so SuJatha, you're here.
Yes.
And Allison, you're here.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all. Let's move forward with the memorialization of application 22002. Milburn Common Associates or her MD and it is for minor site plan approval. Apologies, I'm just trying to pull it open right now. And the parking variance and loading space.
Each day, that's right.
I reviewed, I had no specific questions. I did just want to make one comment just to thank Council or in your preparation of it. I appreciate that on, it's on page nine or row 207. You acknowledge that several members of the public appeared to speak in support of the application. So I just wanted to thank you for noting that as well. And did anybody have any errors or corrections that they may have caught or concerns on the memorialization? Okay, I moved to approve memorialization of application 22002.
I moved.
And would you like to second Allison?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, that's great. Just confirming that Allison was, yep, a voting member at that application. Perfect. Okay.
Diane Aglow.
Sorry, yes.
Gaston Halper.
Yes.
Sweeney Vijay.
Yes.
Deborah Nevis.
Yes.
Maggie Miggins.
Yes.
Corey Biller.
Yes.
Allison Canfield.
Yes.
Daniel Bear.
Yes.
Betsal.
Yes. Thank you. Memorialization of application 22002 approved. We have no applications on our agenda for this evening. We do have one order of business, which was the proposed ordinance 2627-22, which we will turn to next. I just wanted to clarify for everybody's benefit because I know we had received an email draft yesterday after midday, I think it was in the morning, of a subcommittee that we had formed here of our own planning board. And in the email transmittal, it said for discussion, you know, at Wednesday's meeting, I just want to clarify because it was not on the agenda and we hadn't noticed it as such, and because we just received it as a board yesterday, it is for review and we will plan to have a discussion about it, about what we received. And if there is any action that we as a board want to take at our next meeting, which will be, I want to say the 21st.
Yes.
Yes, December 21st. So I just wanted to clarify for the purposes, I don't know if any of the folks and members of the public listening were coming for that specific item, but we would just want to make sure it's on the agenda reflected. So we can share that out and make sure folks from historical preservation, if they're interested in listening and can also just have adequate notice on that as well. So that said, I would like to have us move to ordinance 262722, which was brought to us from the township committee as a result of many months of, of work and coordination on creating this development review committee. Not only did we receive the ordinance, Graham also helpfully prepared a memorandum, which we received on Monday describing or noting some background about it as well as his recommendations and overview on planning board consistency. The intent tonight is to have a discussion and hopefully Graham can avail himself to, to answer any questions that may arise. And following discussion that we have as a board, we would make a determination if it is not inconsistent with the master plan, which the double negative means are we, is this proposed ordinance consistent with the, the planning board's plan? And then we would return that determination to the township, the TC, and then they could take action on the ordinance. So we are not the approval of the ordinance, but we are reviewing it for consistency with our master. So we are not the approval of the ordinance, but we are reviewing it for consistency with our master plan. Am I characterizing that right, Graham?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And while you're here and have their mic on, is there anything in addition to what you shared that you wanted to say or characterize regarding this proposed ordinance?
Just in general summary, I just want to first say that the formation of the working group that spent pretty much the balance of this year, working on setting up this development review committee group has been meeting periodically throughout the year. And that group is established by a township committee resolution way back at the beginning in January of this year. I just want to thank the committee members for their long efforts. It was a lot of work, you know, assisting us in setting up this review committee format. And just in brief summary, the development review committee is envisioned as a technical review committee of township professionals and staff, as well as public safety officials as well, to conduct pre-reviews of applications with the applicant present to walk through site plan improvements to ensure consistency with standards and as well as any identify any life, health or safety issues that should be addressed prior to appearance at the board. The development review committee has been structured as such that so that it is consistent of just township professionals and staff. There are no board members participating or other folks. This allows this group to review both site plan applications to the planning board, as well as to the board of adjustment to allow for consistency and review of site plan applications. The intent and purpose is to streamline applications on arrival to here at the planning board. So these site plan applicants will have the benefit of, you know, addressing concerns, mitigating any circumstances or, you know, ensuring consistency with site design standards or other elements of the development regulations, zoning ordinance. Otherwise, I'll take any questions, happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. But I do again, want to thank the committee that, you know, spent a lot of time working on this. I appreciate all their input and I think we have a nice pre-review ordinance. The last thing that I did just want to note is that this is a compulsory review. So this would be required, applicants would be required to appear as part of this process to ensure that we're, you know, availing the applicant, the benefit of the input and making sure that all applications that arrive here at the boards are consistently reviewed and vetted prior to appearance.
Graham, can I ask sort of two follow-up questions? One, has Milburn ever done this in the past before? And if you know, and two, does this development review committee happen elsewhere? And is it a successful model? Can you sort of like contextualize it?
Happy to expand upon both of those. So the first is, yes, Milburn had a similar form of this group called the Technical Coordinating Committee. And Eileen, you can correct me on the terminology if that's correct. But that was an optional review and that was not required. And it was, you know, the applicant's election whether to appear before that board to, you know, do that advanced review before proceeding over to the corresponding land use board. So, you know, it was similar in structure, very similar with respect to membership. But it was an optional appearance and it was not required. In this format, we have made this required element, which I think will provide for better, more consistent reviews that will appear here at the planning board and hopefully create more efficiencies in the board's review and adjudication of applications that appear. Second, this is not unique. This is a format that exists in many communities across New Jersey. The former community where I was a staff municipal planner, we had a development review committee. It is a significant benefit and allows for an opportunity to identify and discuss issues. And, you know, highlight opportunities to correct, tweak or adjust plans and make and prepare memorandum that advances those recommendations that are discussed and distilled at the committee level up to the board for their consideration. A great example that I'd like to give is, you know, crosswalks or sidewalks, you know, having police at the table that know pedestrian conflicts or pedestrian issues at an intersection can raise that with an applicant and suggest, you know, modifications or adjustments to correct that so that that is discussed and contemplated before we get here to the board. And, you know, there's outstanding questions as to, was this considered or was that discussed? Now we have a record that that was discussed and addressed and, you know, police were participating in that review process. So I hope that answers your two questions that you had.
It did, thanks very much. Anybody else have questions regarding the process? I see Diane first and then Gaston next.
First of all, thank you, Graham. We, Maggie and I were in this committee and we did go over this for months and months and months and really drill down. Has this going to benefit commercial property owners and applicants coming in? It's going to streamline it, streamline, hopefully save them possibly thousands of dollars with an application that will really be ready. No variances, they cannot need a variance. And maybe just for, there are some people watching, maybe just tell them who is on the committee, like who is going to be the makeup.
Sure, I can run through membership. Yeah, Diane, you touched on two things that I just wanted to mention. So Diane is correct in that this development review committee will review only site plan applications, which are applications for properties containing three and more residential units, constituting multifamilies or non-residential or commercial properties or mixed use properties as well. So this is not subject to one and two family residential property owners. They're not required to appear before this group or go through additional meetings. We wanted to make sure that that was not part of this process. The second component, just regarding membership, which is listed under 417.2 of the proposed ordinance, but include the township planner, the township engineer, a representative from the police department, the township fire official, the zoning officer, a construction code official. And then the development review committee will have the ability to pull in any other staff or board consultants to provide advice as requested by the development review committee. And we also further noted that when an application is located within the special improvement district, the representative from the district management corporation should participate in the review of the application as well and may provide input and advice.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. I guess on your next and I see SuJatha as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the township engineer will be able to attend all the meetings in the future, even though this committee has formed. Is that correct?
I'm just going to question.
Oh, as far as attending here at the board.
Yeah, so I really like having Martha available for all the planning board meetings because we can ask questions, you know, as they come up or whatnot, even though this committee is formed and everything's gone through.
Yeah, absolutely.
In attendance at these meetings, Gaston, so.
Okay.
Well, I think, you know, the intent and purpose of the development review committee is to provide an opportunity for the applicant to discuss issues directly with Martha in a small format prior to the meeting to address, you know, drainage calculations, you know, is that retention area sized appropriately? Those types of things that we don't necessarily have to get into minutia here at the board level. And hopefully that can be cleaned up and addressed. The idea behind this is to create efficiencies here in your review so that things come less half-baked and more well-done.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thank you. SuJatha, you are next.
I have two questions. One is, is this an optional review in the DRC? Or is this mandatory for someone coming before the planning board? Is this a mandatory pre-step or an optional one?
This, the way that we've structured this is that it would be a required appearance before the DRC. You know, of course, the applicant doesn't necessarily have to show up, but the, you know, this at least avails township professionals and consultants the opportunity to sit down and review an application and prepare comments both to the applicant and to this board collectively. You know, what we found in my prior experience in working on a similar format committee is that, you know, there are representatives from police, you know, and fire and other entities that may not be familiar with reading site plan applications. So they may not understand exactly what they're looking at, which, you know, I'm sure as you all have learned on the job here at the planning board, they can be difficult things to review. So having an opportunity to sit down as a group to talk through some of these issues and have the engineer and have the planner and have these other folks to talk through this process is a benefit.
And Graham, can you just clarify for SuJatha and for everybody's benefit? Not every application that is going to be submitted to Eileen for zoning or planning board consideration is going to be required to go through the DRC. I know you said it before, but maybe just re.
That is correct. Yet to reiterate, you know, applicants for properties containing three or more residential units and any non-residential or commercial property would be subject to this additional review. One and two family homes are not subject to this review. And that's actually consistent with the requirements of the municipal land use law. State law does not allow for additional reviews of one and two family properties.
And what is the timing on this in terms of appearing before the DRC and then the turnaround time so that they can then bring it to the planning board?
Yeah, so I mean, the intent would be to have the applicant appear before the DRC fairly shortly after deeming the application complete. You know, we want to make sure that we have a complete package that is, you know, all the materials and items have been submitted and filed. And then shortly after we would hold that pre, you know, advisory review meeting. And then the applicant could then be scheduled following the DRC meeting for this public hearing before the board. And the DRC is also required to send a report of their meeting discussion and discourse to this board for consideration as well.
Right, so what I'm trying to understand there, Graham, is so do you see that as a two-week timing between when they come before the DRC for review and the DRC committee then sends their memo?
So it certainly, it kind of depends on the applicant. You know, I think that there are some timing requirements within the ordinance that require that two weeks submission of the report back to the planning board. However, I do just want to caveat that oftentimes after appearing before these pre-review boards, applicants go and make changes or modifications to their plan. So, you know, there may be a lag between, you know, between DRC appearance and when the final hearing is scheduled for this board. Because the applicant may want to correct or modify or make adjustments to their plans so that they have a better chance of moving forward quickly before the board.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Dan, you are next.
Thanks, Beth. Graham, I just want to ask you for some of your experience. I think the, the whole idea of the board is a great idea and I think it's very helpful to the applicant. However, my concern is always that the board provides some level of review and recommendation. Then it goes to a board, the board subsequently turns down the application, which potentially could happen. You would hope that wouldn't since it goes through the review, but you never know. So I want to know, one, have you ever in your experience seen that happen? And two, is there a way that we can protect the board? Where that there is, you know, maybe there is something that is put into the bylaws of the ordinance where there is absolutely no guarantee that that the application will be approved because the board doesn't know. So just want to make sure that we don't have a situation where it goes through full board review and then it goes through the planning board zoning board and then gets turned down for some reason.
Sure. No, thank you for the question. I appreciate that, Dan. I think that that's good to, good information for you all to have. So first, in my experience, I will say yes, I have seen, you know, an applicant that has gone to a development review committee format or a pre-review committee, you know, and gone through the process, received recommendations regarding site plan, you know, tweaks or updates, and then proceeded to board where the application was denied. I have seen that happen. It, and you know, and part two of that as far as protecting this body and kind of insulating it. That's why the, the development review committee is structured as such without any participation by any of you appointed board members. And the responsibility section of the ordinance clearly defines the jurisdiction and scope of the role of the DRC, limiting it to identification of any relief that's needed or, you know, compliance with standards. You know, and then making recommendations on technical elements of the site plan. You know, they're really not supposed to get into discussion of, you know, variance relief, you know, what kind of, you know, criteria we're going to meet, positive criteria, negative criteria, you know, that's really not germane to the discussion of the development review committee. This, the focus of the scope is really limited to talking about these technical elements. I'll certainly.
Graham, if you get an applicant that comes in, I would assume that applicant, once they go through review, probably assumes that they are almost guaranteed that they're going to go through planning board zoning board and sail through. I'm just asking, is it, is there any additional language that needs to be incorporated into the ordinance that, that protects that body? And in the sense that there's no guarantee that the subsequent review will be a positive review. And I, and I understand their role. I'm just saying, maybe this is a question Brad as well. Is it necessary? And if it's not, that's fine. I just, I bring that up as a point.
No, I appreciate that and I'll certainly look to Ed for any additional insight on his thoughts. But as I mentioned, you know, this is a pretty standard format in many communities that have these pre-review processes. And, you know, the applicants know that no one that's participating on this development review committee has a vote and has the ability to say yes or no on this application. And the applicants and their attorneys often, you know, understand that it's you all that they have to present to, you know, for the final determination on their application. And that no one at the DRC is really empowered to, to make a decision on their application.
Thanks, Ed. Did you have any recommendations or thoughts on that?
Ah, yes, I think that if the, if the committee sticks with what the ordinance says, the concerns that, that a member bear has raised should be minimized or, or eliminated. The, the report that the committee, development review committee is to prepare and transmit is to include, and it's right at the end of the ordinance, a summary of the discussion and the running findings or recommendations discussed with the applicant. So, you know, it's, it should be more of an informational kind of thing to note what the committee raised, you know, what the applicant's position was or whatever. But it, I, it should not be any kind of recommendation. And I think Graham said this of, you know, recommendation with regard to the merits of the application. It's much more of an analytical kind of thing. And again, so long as the committee sticks with what the ordinance says, I think, I think will be protected. I did want to raise two other points, if I might, Madam Chair.
Sure.
One is just to clarify the process that's set up in the ordinance. The review, it's a mandatory review by the development review committee of site plans and major subdivisions. That's the mandatory part. Okay, so every application that fits within that category will be subject to review by the development review committee. An applicant is not required to appear, nor their professionals, nor anybody else. So again, I just want to make that clear that it's not mandatory for an applicant to appear. An applicant could not appear at all and the development review committee is still required to review the application and have the discussions, raise the issues they have to raise. If the applicant's not there, there's no response, so to speak, that the report will contain. But nonetheless, the, the committee has to review that. So I, we, we were not, we're not precise sometimes when we use the language around applicant has to come before the board, before the committee, an applicant doesn't have to come before the committee. The application has to come before the committee and that's two different things. Although I would think as, as I think Graham at least implied, applicants would typically take this opportunity to, to see what's going on as opposed to just ignore the, the process and not attend at those kinds of meetings. And, and to that point, I guess, the the ordinance is structured to say that applications for site plan, it does not distinguish between minor site plans or major site plans. And that may be something we'd want to recommend that the township committee clarify because Graham's explanation seemed to be that any site plan application would be, would come before the the development review committee. And the reason that, that just the use of the words site plan may be somewhat ambiguous is because when we talk about subdivisions, which is the next, next few words, it specifically refers to major subdivisions. So therefore minor subdivisions, which as you know, in Milburn, if I remember it correctly, and I'm not mixing it up with some other municipality, is, is, does not create any new lot. A minor subdivision in Milburn is not, you know, less than five lots or less than three lots. It does not create any new lots. It's, it's really just lot line adjustments for the most part. So that if the intent is to have minor site plans and major site plans come before the development review committee, that may be something that the township committee could, or the planning board can consider recommending to the township committee to just clarify that so that it's not, it's not ambiguous as set forth here. as set forth here. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ed. I appreciate that that item for consideration. Deborah, you are next.
Thanks. Um, my question is whether there will be, I think Ed said something about a summary. Are there going to be minutes capped for these meetings and will they be available to the public? So that the public can see what transpires?
Well, so as part of the, you know, it's listed in four seventeen dot four, section C of the ordinance that's before you. And Mr. Bouzek just made reference to this section that the, within fourteen days of the review of the application by the DRC, the planner is a designated preparer of a report on behalf of the DRC. And that report needs to be transmitted to the to the planning board and or the Board of Adjustment. And it needs to include a summary of the discussion and any findings and or recommendations discussed with the applicant. On transmission, that report becomes part of the application record. So that becomes part of the public record related to that application. So that will be, you know, within the file, and that report will also be contained in any transmission of the application to this body or to the Board of Adjustment in consideration of the application. So yes, that that will be public and become a public document once it is part of the application record.
Okay, but the report, it sounds like, is not the same as minutes of the meetings. It's more of a summary so that there's not as much of a sense of exchanges that go on or things that are said.
Yeah, the the, this isn't a public body, so it's not functioning in the same way with respect to minutes and that kind of detailed note taking. But the summary of findings and the summary of discussion should be, you know, fairly detailed in that, you know, what topical areas were discussed, what recommendations were made by professionals to the applicant with respect to modifications or changes to the plans as well. You know, because the the DRC is not going to see those changes all the way through, so they need to advise this body and the Board of Adjustment of the changes that they suggested be made by the applicant.
Okay, thanks, Graham.
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks for that question, Deborah. Martha, you are next.
Yes, I had a question for Graham, and I want to call on your experience in other townships. In your summary of the ordinance under membership, you listed that other staff or board consultants to advise the DRC. So say, for example, we had an an application. I'm thinking of the First Energy application that, you know, that particular plot of land is still sitting there vacant at the intersection of Vauxhall and Milburn. And we had proposals before the zoning board that were denied, that called for a seven eleven at one time, which creates a big traffic issue at a very busy intersection. So for a situation like that, I would want to call in a board consultant to review their application that's a traffic engineer. So who would pay for that? Would we, that payment come from the developer? And how exactly would we collect that fee then?
Sure. So in other communities where I have, you know, served and worked as the planner, the boards have retained additional professionals beyond typically, you know, board planner and attorney and engineer. I've been with boards that have retained an architectural consultant, you know, a traffic consultant, parking consultant. And so those are additional professionals that boards do have the ability to retain. And, you know, when an application warrants such a review, they can pull in those professionals. And those professionals are funded and paid out of applicant escrows, just like, you know, other professionals in review of these applications. And this DRC process would also, you know, professional reviews through this process would be funded through the escrow. So that is an opportunity there as well.
Okay, thanks, Graham.
Thanks for that clarification. Diane, you had a question. Oh, you just muted yourself. You you went reverse.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
So Dan brought up a point that's something we never discussed. There was an applicant ever figured they were entitled or to an approval? In all the towns that have had this, that you've experienced, has that ever come up, Graham?
No, that has not come up because, you know, typically typically applicants in this case, you know, those with the multifamily property or, you know, as a larger commercial property entity are typically an LLC or an incorporated entity that's, you know, represented by an attorney. So most attorneys, you know, when you're reviewing these applications, understand that, you know, this Development Review Committee contains, you know, the police guy, the fire guy, you know, the fireman or woman, you know, contains these other professionals that are not sitting here and going to be adjudicating the application. So there's typically, you know, a baseline understanding that this is a pre-process. And, you know, I think as part of administrative processes that happen, you know, should this ordinance be adopted, the applicant would be advised of this appearance at the Development Review Committee of the application. And they're certainly, you know, invited to attend should they want to or they don't have to, as Mr. Bouzek noted, you know, it is not the required appearances of the application before this committee, it is not of the applicant themselves. So and I think that is also a distinction, I think, you know, will help applicants understand that, you know, nothing, nothing official can happen here, so.
So there's no reason to put a caveat in there that, you know, disclaimer, you are not guaranteed approval at the board that you appear before. Like, there's no reason to put that in writing somewhere?
I I mean, I don't see.
I don't know. I never thought about that until Dan brought it up. Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate, you know, Dan's comment on that. I think that that's helpful. I don't foresee that being an issue. And, you know, the the legal review that we had done by the Township Attorney's Office of this draft ordinance didn't suggest that either. And I think, I think it's part of the process that we'll have to just message to applicants and help them understand. And I think it does, you know, convey, particularly in that last section, noting about the transmission of the report over to the full board. You know, that that kind of leans it, you know, there's, there's another step in the process. This is not the end of the road for that application.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thanks. And Eileen, oh, Ed, do you have a comment on that specific item?
I do, I do on that, if I might, and that perhaps consideration could be given by Graham, who who's going to be the scrivener of this report, to have at the end of each of these reports, some kind of standard paragraph that maybe alludes to that. And it's been routine to to put that in there. It's, and there's, I don't think it's it's necessary, but you know, there's nothing wrong with with having, and I suspect as time goes on, Graham will be creating and probably has a basic template anyway. And that may be something that you just want to put at the end of every, or every kind of thing, like, you know, the standard conditions we put in resolutions, that same kind of process.
Sure, sure. No, thank you, Ed.
Would that be appropriate for us as a board to potentially make that recommendation when, if we return this to the TC?
I I wouldn't put it in the ordinance. I I would leave that the other review committee to to deal with, you know, and and give them that flexibility.
Okay, thanks. Eileen, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Graham a real quick question regarding the timeline because how often is this Development Review Committee going to meet? I'm just because it says that it has to, this is going to be taking place after the application is submitted, but before it's deemed complete. So how often? Number, that was my first question. How often do you anticipate meeting, number one? And then going off Martha's concern, like, if we do have a big application, who would, would it be, would it be you to say, you know what, I think this would require an independent traffic consultant? And that kind of, sometimes it does take a little long to get someone. I don't know, is that something that could be accommodated in such a short timeframe? You have to check for conflicts of interest, you know, and that kind of thing. You anticipate. So those are my two main questions.
Sure, sure. No, excellent question. So on the first point, you know, I think it really kind of depends on the application load. You know, we, you know, it depends, and and also, given this format in that, you know, it is really professionals and internal, I think it would be, you know, and kind of an as-needed basis. You know, when we get an application, we would, you know, work to schedule it. I think we would want to also coordinate scheduling with the applicant, just, you know, to allow for their appearance. You know, so I don't, I don't anticipate this being like a regularly scheduled, you know, every month, this is a meeting. I think it would be more of an as-needed basis. You know, certainly dependent if, you know, things pick up, you know, we could certainly meet more frequently. Yeah, and the intent also was to schedule this meeting prior to determination of completeness to help in that process, to identify outstanding issues or, you know, to help in the kind of completeness determination process. We can sit down and go through the application have the DRC to to identify, well, you you missed this form or this plan, or, you know, you really need to add information about the lighting details on the plan. Just some things to that effect. Second, with respect to retention of additional professionals, you know, many boards, and, you know, this kind of gets into this actually well timed, given that we're coming around to the the beginning of the year. You know, a lot of boards that I've worked with previously typically, you know, solicit and retain professionals early in the year, and then they have them just available. You know, they've, they've kind of selected a traffic consultant, a parking consultant. They do that as part of their reorganization or January meeting so that they're available for the for the balance of the year. They don't come to the meetings like this, you know, they don't participate in every meeting, but, you know, they're available when you have, when you need them. And that just creates that connection to to call on on those professionals on that as-needed basis. I'm not suggesting that, you know, the township do that at this point, or the this board do that at this point, but something to think about, I think, as we get into some of these application reviews.
Okay, thank you.
I just actually wanted to ask a follow-up question on that, on on the scheduling. And maybe it's something that you would want to discuss with, you know, Eileen or the, you know, sort of the folks from the township who would be responsible for serving on this committee. Because maybe it it might make more sense to have a hold on a calendar, you know, first Wednesday of every month at 1:00 PM, you know, DRC meets, and if there is nothing, it gets, you know, almost like having a hold so that you have it and and can make that known to applicants. It's, it's, I don't know if this was discussed in the formation of the group, but you know, otherwise sometimes scheduling can become a nightmare if you have seven, eight professionals. You know, we, I would not want to potentially be setting up a situation where we would be holding up an applicant who wants to do business in our town because we can't get the right people in the room because they have to do, you know, a DRC meeting and then determine that they're complete and then get on the calendar for a planning board meeting. You know, I I'm afraid that we're sort of creating a bureaucratic bottleneck. So I I would certainly leave it to the 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 members of the DRC to think about it, but but maybe having regularly scheduled meetings, just so that people have it.
And no opposition on my part. You know, I think it really kind of depends on the 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 busyness of applications and, you know, kind of reflecting back on this year. I know that this, we haven't seen many applications for this board. But I think I do agree, having something more routinely scheduled is probably just better for, you know, public knowledge and awareness as to when things may may get through the process. So, no, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yep. Other questions or comments? This is a good discussion, I think, it's helpful. Okay, so you know, I think some of the things we heard with respect to this, I don't think anybody's seemed concerned or or I'm not hearing objections to the the concept of it. I think some some clarifications around the timing and the sort of determinations, you know, the results of what what emerges from this DRC and what comes to the boards, it would it would affect the planning board and also the the zoning board of adjustments, right? If if some were zoning board applications. Just making sure it's it's very, you know, clear to the applicants that the the outcome of the meeting is just a discussion and for them to react to or or adjust or revise, you know, per that that committee and that the report will come to the the appropriate board for a full application hearing. And I think we also heard on Ed mention we may want to make a recommendation to the TC to review the ordinance or or potentially, you Graham, to review the ordinance and clarify major or minor site plan approval. And or just clarify that and how we characterize this. Is there anything else that we want to? And I think where we came, what I heard the result was, is that the way it's written, you know, Ed felt sufficiently addressed the fact that in that four seventeen four three or it's C on mine. Notes that this is a summary discussion that is advancing, so it it makes it pretty clear that this is not a determination.
If I could add, could we make a recommendation on this to exactly what Graham had stated that that we're really recommending to the TC that they set up professionals, consulting professionals? Is there something we can do there to support that? Because I know sometimes when we miss things and it takes a while for that to happen again. So is that something that we can make a recommendation to the TC that we support professionals, you know, being hired? And as Graham said, it's the perfect time of the year to help support the DRC and actually even the planning board. Like Graham said, we can pull these professionals in when needed. And also what you had mentioned was we get to the point where we're waiting on, you know, professionals to be able to show up. I think it'd be important to also have these people retained. Is that something we can do on this document?
I don't know that we, I I think that would be an appropriate recommendation to make as we return it back. I don't know that the the DRC ordinance would call for the on-call, basically having on-call consultants sort of of like available at the ready, but I think that could, that would be a I mean, I guess I would let Graham or Ed speak, but I think that would be an appropriate recommendation from the planning board to our TC, but I guess Ed or Ed, would you recommend including that?
Yeah, the the statute is pretty broad in terms of the the primary goal, or primary objective of the planning board is to make the determination as to whether or not this ordinance or determine that it's not inconsistent with the master plan. But then the statute goes on to say, and then the other matters that the planning board deems appropriate or something like that, it's broad language. So certainly that kind of thing would be, would be something we could put in recommendations. And and I have to say, I I concur with that because the process of selecting and retaining a traffic consultant or you know, structural engineer, whatever it may be that that you want to have sort of on staff or on call is not a simple one. And and it it seems that it would make a lot of sense to have them for all the reasons that have been given. So I I think it's a, it's an appropriate kind of recommendation to township committee, and then they can decide, you know, what they want to do and how they want to go about that.
To make things easy, we do have a on-call traffic engineer that we've that township has. So we we have someone that we can consult with.
And unless there was a conflict of, conflict with the potential applicant right here is available. I mean, as far as I know, he's going to be asked to come back.
I I think, I think he's on the list, Diane.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think that's covered.
The org meeting, so.
Great. Other sort of, you know, additional I just want to make sure I'm capturing everything, hopefully for Eileen's benefit, as she's going to draft this this memo to go to the the TC back from us. Great. Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion on this draft ordinance as it stands? So this would be, we're looking for I will go ahead and make the motion. How about this?
Hold on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was somebody speaking up? I'm gonna make, oh, okay, but first let me make the, but thank you, Sherry. I'm going to make a motion to state that ordinance twenty six, twenty seven, twenty two, as presented, is not inconsistent with the master plan. Sherry, second to that. And Ed, would I, I think we sort of have summarized what the additional recommendations were, the last like two or three items that we discussed. Would be recommendations that would not be for amending the ordinance, but would be for inclusion in a memorandum to the TC.
Well, well, I think the the minor, the clarification.
Thank you, the minor, thank you.
Would probably be something that they they ought to consider putting in the ordinance to clarify.
Thank you.
The selection of the professionals, I think, is is not part of the ordinance. That's a regular sort of an outside the ordinance recommendation, the other matters, so to speak.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and Eileen, you'll do a roll call vote.
Yes, on how per?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Deborah Nevis?
Yes.
You drafted Sean? You dropped a Sean?
Jeff, that you're muted.
She's saying, yeah.
I see she's saying yes, but now she's. Why don't we move on, okay, there we go, okay, thanks, Jeff. Say we can move on and come back, okay. We got a yes for her.
Diane Aglow?
Yes.
Sweeney B.J.?
Yes.
Corey Biller?
Yes.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Great, thank you. Um. We have no other items. I did want to, uh, raise earlier, which I, I already mentioned, the item, uh, that we will discuss, the historic preservation element, which everybody received yesterday. Um, the subcommittee that, um, prepared a memo, thank you to participants and members, um, for really jumping right on that, and within a month, um, having, having thoughts back for us for consideration, I appreciate that. Um, and second, I just, a reminder, I think everybody was here the last time, but I did mention um, the goal to resume in-person uh planning board meetings starting in the month of January and, and the new year, so just, I guess, put that in your, in your mind. Um, the idea of just bringing ourselves back together for, uh, some of that nice human interaction and be able to engage with the public, uh, in person as well, be nice. Um, that said, I make a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Motion, second.
Second by Maggie, thank you, all in favor?
I have a quick question. I was not there, um, at the HPC discussion, I was out of town, so, uh, but didn't attend the meeting. In order for me to attend the next meeting, yeah, do I need to, can I attend it? And to, if so, then what do I need to do? Review the video?
We're not voting on it next meeting, we're just gonna review this memo.
Okay.
Yeah, so we received a memo via, via email.
I did receive that memo too.
And so we, we will just be discussing that memorandum at our next meeting. It will be, um, talked about, there is a subcommittee, I don't know if that is what you're referencing, um, which is comprised of, um, a few members of our board, but that is, uh, that is limited to those members. So, and then they report back to the board. Um, that's due to, because they're, they're meeting and discussing, and so we can't have a, a quorum of our planning board.
Right, I understood that.
Okay.
All right, very good.
And Diane?
So when we discuss that at the next meeting, there won't be a vote, but will the public who could be affected by this be able to speak and ask questions?
Um, I think the intention, it's a good question, if, I, I haven't fully reviewed the memorandum, which is part of why you know, I didn't think we would be ready to discuss it tonight. But this was a subcommittee, so the, the, you know, members of our own board reviewed it and are coming to us, the, the broader planning board, making some recommendations on what we might do with that element as it stands. Do we want to make amendments to it? Do we want to, you know, take some parts that we, we, you know, that, that we like as they stand? Um, so I don't know, Graham, if there was a recommendation on whether this is a, the appropriate time to engage the public now, or I don't know if we were silent on that at this time. I'm asking you because I know you prepared the memo.
Sure, so just quickly, you know, the memo talks through a series of recommendations that the, uh, committee came up with. Um, one component of that, as you will see in your review, is a public outreach effort. Um, so I think that that may be part of, um, the requested revisions or modifications that the committee has suggested um, back to the Historic Preservation, uh, Commission. So I think in review of the memo, um, the board, this board should, you know, consider that, and, and we'll make that determination, I think, at the next meeting, how things move forward.
Okay, so Diane, to answer your question, I think we would receive it, we would discuss it as a board, and then maybe take an action, which might be to have a public hearing or something like that following. But I, I think we haven't necessarily given the public. We are only going to be having an internal discussion, so we wouldn't have given them a presentation or anything yet to, to react to. I think it's almost too, too soon.
Okay, I think, you know, at the Township Committee level, we are constantly talking about transparency and letting people know what's going on. And I think in that vein, it would be probably appropriate for the township to notify the three hundred and fifty-one potential addresses that are going to be affected by this. I think that would be appropriate, and I think I will, Graham or Alex McDonald should be doing that before the next planning board meeting, because even if you're not voting on it, I think affected residents and commercial property owners should be notified that this is something that's going on. So I will talk to Alex about that tomorrow, and Graham, you might want to, um, do something too. I mean, I don't know, you don't have the addresses, I think Eileen would have them, but.
I, I think we can talk about it, but again, because this is the planning board's action, we certainly wouldn't, I don't think we would move forward and take any action without, um, you know, as we discussed at the last meeting, making sure we feel comfortable that this has been sufficiently vetted. But I think we need to, I, I honestly haven't reviewed fully the memo, and that's why I'm not prepared to react. I don't even know, it may actually call for further public engagement in it. Um, so I guess I would want to take a look first before making.
I think there was two, Graham, I think there was two places that you mentioned, there should be two public outreach meetings. But if no one knows about it yet, like, I think they should be clued in, in my opinion. I think it's only fair and proper, but I'll talk to Alex tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Um, I think we've already adjourned, so. But thank you all, um, we'll see you in two weeks.
Very good, everyone, thank you.